Um, good afternoon and welcome everyone to the Arizona State Board of Pharmacy Special Meeting. It is September twelfth, twenty twenty-five and the time is two thirty. I will call the meeting to order. Dr. Gandhi, if you can do roll call and conflicts of interest, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Wamsley?
Present, no conflicts.
Mr. Anderson?
Present, no conflicts.
Ms. Davis?
Present, no conflicts.
Ms. Park?
Present, no conflicts.
Thank you. Mr. Alasif?
You have no conflicts.
Mr. Thorwald?
Here, no conflict.
Mr. Brasswell?
Here, no conflicts.
Mr. Hogan? And Miss Browning? We do have a core Madam Chair, two absences, Mr. Hogan and Miss Browning are not present.
Thank you, Dr. Gandhi. Um, next lift up, let's move to approval of the meeting minutes. Um, can I have a motion with regards to approving the YouTube streaming for the August twentieth and twenty-first me- first meeting?
I so make that motion.
So I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I think uh, next we'll move to item four. Um, Dr. Gandhi, I'll let you perhaps start off with why we're here and um, uh, where we're gonna get started for with the discussion for today, but appreciate everybody's attendance on short notice for this um, special meeting today.
Certainly, Madam Chair, and after my recap, I think we're gonna go to number six, um, and maybe at this time, uh, Lynn can put up the number while I chat, because there's a thirty-second delay um, from the time we posted and the time people see it. Madam Chair, thank you again, uh, and more board members, thanks for coming together so quickly uh, for this meeting. Uh, this topic began approximately a week and a half ago where DHS reached out to uh, to myself to talk about uh, the situation of immunization vaccine that's taking place across the country. Um, and uh, what, what are our thoughts on it? What are we gonna do about it and and so forth? Uh, soon after that, the Governor's Office engaged in that dialogue with with us as well. Seems like DHS and the Governor's Office were already engaged and they kind of cast a net that that incorporated us as well. And as you all may have heard, uh, there was a executive order issued yesterday authorizing us to move forward with an emergency immunization rules package, which allows uh, immunization, particularly COVID, now to be available to the general public uh, outside of CDC and AICIP guidelines. Um, and that's kind of where we sit right now, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Gandhi. So for discussion today, we'll talk about the emergency rule regarding immunizations and then review the state protocol, correct?
That is correct. There are some adjustments and Ms. Calvin will have to correct me if I'm out of line here. Um, we don't necessarily need the Governor's approval for rule writing because it was identified that i- in the uh, executive order. Um, so four A is probably uh, a topic of discussion we don't need to engage in. I also got clarification from the Governor's Office and that was the intent for us to move to emergency approval, to move to emergency rulemaking. And then soon after, start, start the regular rulemaking process. So the authority is already there in the executive order.
Thank you, Dr. Gandhi. Um, next up, um, as you mentioned, we're gonna go ahead and to move to item number six, which is solicitation of comments from the public regarding items four and five on the agenda. Um, we're doing this a little bit out of order and a little bit different than we do normal call to the public. So this is solicitation of public feedback. Um, I thought it was best for us to go ahead and hear what the public has to say before we deliberate on this, um, to make sure that we incorporate any, anybody's feedback into our discussion. So um, not knowing how many people may join the meeting today, we're gonna go ahead and limit the time to three minutes. Um, just because it's already late in the day and there could be a lot of interest in this particular topic. So um, Lynn is going to um, display a um, timer, I believe, on the screen either that or um, have some way that that he's t- tracking the the timer behind the scenes. There will be three beeps at thirty seconds and at three minutes, um, um, he will mute the speaker just so that we can be respectful of everybody's time and make sure that we have the opportunity to hear everyone. Um, after we finish with all of the public comments, if there's anybody in the room or online, um, then we will move into deliberation, discussion of those public comments as well as the the agenda topics. Um, before I open it up to the public, does any board member have any questions before we move forward to hear what the public has to say about this? All right, hearing none, is there anybody in the room? That wishes to make public comment?
I don't see anybody that has dialed in online at this time.
Um, Madam Chair, there's nobody in the room here in the audience.
Thank you, Ms. Canavon.
I think in the interest of having uh, people shared our opinions, maybe we leave number six open as we have a dialogue in case somebody knows, Madam Chair.
Yep, we can take it one more time after, after we move forward with the dialogue, but um, I just wanted to make sure that the public had the opportunity to share their thoughts before we engaged in discussion, but we certainly will be willing to entertain um, any additional feedback from the public at the end of the meeting. All right, so um, moving on to through the rest of the agenda, so we do not need to do item four A or four B. Is that correct?
That is correct, Madam Chair, and Jean, correct me if I'm wrong, but that, that would be a correct statement.
Uh, that's correct. When you give him approval to proceed with the emergency rulemaking process, that will be included.
Okay. Um, so moving on to item four C, Dr. Gandhi, I don't know if we want to display the rule. I know you posted it online um, for the public to have access to it. Um, do we want to display it or um, just jump in directly into discussion?
Yeah, if we can just jump in, Madam Chair.
Okay. Does anybody have any feedback on the draft rules proposed, starting on page? Thank you for Frank of the board book. So this would repeal our existing rules and uh, R four twenty-three, four eleven and would create a um, additional pathway um, for pharmacists to administer immunizations under a statewide standing order issued by the Department of Health Services.
Madam Chair, the only thing I can add is there might be some references that we may have to adjust and uh, some record keeping sections that we may have to elaborate. Obviously, this took place pretty quickly and uh, and we, we did the best we could to put this rules package together. As comprehensive as we could, but we may have overlooked a few things, not the content and the intent of the rule. Uh, but some, some minor adjustments as far as record keepings and some uh, references that we have in there. Might need some adjustments.
Does anybody have anything they'd like to share or any discussion on the item?
Madam Chair, this is a member, uh, Thorwald, I have a comment.
Yes, please.
Uh, during uh, on this, these particular things, in general, I liked everything I saw uh, there. I did notice, for instance, that we're primarily referring to uh, or talking about immunizations, but we've mentioned flu, we've mentioned COVID. Uh, we seem to be a bit mute on anything else other than that. I mean, certainly there's uh, polio, there's mumps, uh, et cetera, et cetera, out there. And uh, to me, it would be a, a little bit clearer if we also made more reference to a broader spectrum of vaccines, uh, and made, just made that a little clearer. I, I, i- it's in there, don't get me wrong. Uh, I just think it needs to be a little stated in a little different way that's uh, uh, is where I'm coming from.
Dr. Gandhi, uh, do you wanna go ahead and clarify that for him?
A- absolutely. I think, I think the goal for the, the mission for the board, I don't, is the goal, but the mission of the board was and we were tasked to basically open up COVID, and that's what the uh, executive order calls for. Um, so right now, we don't have Governor's approval to move forward with anything other than what, what was drafted. This draft was shared also with the Governor's Office. And uh, we haven't yet gotten feedback, positive or negative. Um, but uh, the overall explanation with the Governor's Office is they're in alignment with what we dropped. Um, beyond that, beyond that scope, would need additional guidance from the Governor's Office.
Then my comments would be to, to discuss my comments with the Governor's Office. Uh, I think that is something that the Governor's Office, let me rephrase this. There's intent and there's actual statements. To me, the Governor's Office, uh, I would think has a broader intent, since I can't speak for the Governor's Office, but this is something I would certainly at least discuss with them, um, before we just wrote it off.
Oh, absolutely. This is not a topic that's going to be dissolved. At once, once this is settled, it's gonna be an ongoing discussion.
The other point.
And just wanna, just one other clarification before you move on. Um, Frank, pharmacists still have the authority to give other vaccines. This is adding another pathway for pharmacists to administer vaccines. Um, today, under our statute, and Ms. Calvin, please correct me if I'm wrong, but uh, pharmacists have the authority to administer vaccines to um, patients um, that are of an eligible, within eligible age range that are included on the ACIP schedule. The issue with COVID right now is the old COVID vaccine that went off the market is not on the new ACIP schedule and ACIP has not met to make those, those guidance and recommendations. So that's why this is an issue is vaccines aren't available without a prescription today, based on the way that our statute reads. Is that a correct summation there, Ms. Calvin?
It is, um, and these emergency rules are based upon the executive order, which is based upon um, and is directed at COVID vaccines, the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six COVID vaccine. The statutes related to the other vaccines and immunizations remain the same. We're just focused on um, the notwithstanding the CDC and AICIP guidelines with respect to COVID, this is what a pharmacist can do.
But they can still administer things like the other vaccines that you mentioned, Frank, under, as long as it's on the ACIP schedule, which those vaccines are.
Okay, good.
That makes sense.
It makes total sense. Uh, the other point that I would get a, a state, and this is not something that we can address, but if the Governor's Office can address, that prevents a vaccination is the cost of a vaccination. And uh, what that is going to be, since it's not on the federal schedule anymore, uh, except for a certain particular group, and then it's questionable after we get into kids or seniors, what, what is acceptable and there needs to be some, I don't know. There's needs to be something there, or no matter what we do, fewer people need them, we're not gonna get them.
Madam Chair, if I may, this, this topic is, it, it covers a lot of different entities. We're one piece of the puzzle, Mr. Thorwald. Uh, I do know that there are discussions happening with access, with uh, DIFI and so forth on, on coverage and getting people, um, you're giving the people the ability to get the vaccine that they need. Um, and that's such, unfortunately, we're not invited to that discussion, but uh, that is happening, uh, behind the scenes.
I assumed that, but I wanted to state it anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Thorwald. Any other feedback? Go ahead, Jean.
And a cost and I was addressing the executive order as well, but Cam is right that um, that is a, a huge part that they continue to work on.
Ms. Wamsley, is DHS currently working on that standing order, or is that something that is available for?
It's, it's, it's in our materials, I believe.
Okay, I just didn't.
Uh, the protocol is in the materials, the standing order is not. DHS hasn't signed, uh, they are in discussion regarding the standing order, but hasn't been put in place. Um, but the protocol, we were uh, on, we were tasked to put a protocol together for DHS. And that's in your board book.
That starts on page uh, twenty-six in the book.
Madam Chairman, Dr. Gandhi, um, I was, just received a text from Dr. Anderson and he was booted off and he's trying to rejoin.
Is there any other feedback on the rules?
Yeah, I can, uh, I'd like to add one, one point for like some entity, uh, like FKAC. Uh, they cannot use standing order outside of their own providers. So because of the requirement for three forty B program, I know vaccine is not three forty B, but uh, can that be, can those entity use their own standing order from their physicians?
Dr. Gandhi or Ms. Calvin, would you like to address that?
Uh, I will have to take it back and see how we can broaden that. With the Governor's Office, that's not something we can solely do. I think, Ms. Calvin, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the standing order indicated that it would be DHS, um, a doctor associated with DHS would be signing it.
That is my understanding.
And uh, I don't know if the CPA uh, collaborative practice agreement can cover that, if the pharmacists work with the providers under agreement.
Immunizations can be given through CPA as long as there's a doctor-patient relationship.
Correct.
Right? So yes, you can entertain a CPA in that situation.
And I believe that will cover it maybe. I don't know if it is necessary to add it to the, to the rules. Unless if it's already clear, maybe we don't need to.
But they would need to be a patient of that prescriber, wouldn't be able to be a population-based collaborative practice agreement, right, Jean and Cam?
They could, they can do a group, uh, CPA, but yeah, that, that patient would have to be associated with that doctor that's, that's signing. So you can have a group of fifty doctors signing one CPA. Uh, but then there has gotta be a, there's gotta be a correlation between the patient and doctor.
Do they have to be a patients-provided relation?
Yes.
So do we need to mention it there, or it's already covered by different rules?
It is covered under CPA rules.
Okay, thank you.
And I believe it's covered in statute, I'll double check, but I believe it is covered, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you.
Any other feedback or comments? Uh, Tenille, anything else from you? Les, anything you'd like to add?
I'd just like to thank staff for uh, working quickly to put this together following the Governor's Executive Board yesterday.
I agree. Um, Mr. Anderson, I see you're back on. Anything you'd like to add, um, conversation-wise about the um, emergency rules related to immunizations, and then we'll move on to the protocol?
No, very supportive. No additional comments.
And I'm supportive as well. Um, you know, I think um, as, as Les mentioned, you know, it was great that the staff was able to pull this together quickly at the Governor's direction and I certainly support patients having the um, ability to choose if they wish to get a vaccine. So um, Dr. Gandhi, do you need a motion specific to this? Does anybody have any edits that they'd like to make to the emergency rule?
Madam Chair, this is Stephanie. Um, I just wanted to also um, echo the thanks for, to the board for, to the um, staff for working quickly on this. And then I also wanna just, on the record, um, put my support behind this.
Thank you. I didn't see you on the screen, I apologize. I forgot that you were on the big room.
In person, I believe so. And I do support these rules and I really appreciate the hard work, uh, board staff put uh, into this. I'm really also like the, the protocol there is very clear for pharmacists to follow. I really appreciate it.
Uh, Ms. Calvin, what would a motion look like for the rules and then we'll go to the protocol?
I am sensing that um, there is support for these um, emergency rules. So you could take four C and four D together, and that would be to approve the final, or approve the emergency rule packages, the rule package, and authorize the executive director to finalize them and submit them to the Attorney General's Office for review and approval.
Uh, can I add to that, Ms. Calvin, about minor changes to references and maybe record keeping?
And that would be appropriate.
Um, I've expressed support of this rule package and propose a motion to adopt these rules and allow the executive director to send them for final approval at the Governor's Office and to allow for minor edits as needed of um, references.
I second that motion.
And, and just a clarification, um, Ms. Davis, they will be sent to the Attorney General's Office.
Yes, yes.
I have a motion by Ms. Davis and a second by Mr. Thorwald. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
And then Madam Chairman, um, I would ask that um, the board vote to authorize the executive director to pursue regular rulemaking.
Would that be?
The emergency rules are only valid for a hundred and eighty days. You can renew them for another one hundred and eighty days, but you have to start the regular rulemaking process.
Do we have a motion?
I saw a move that we uh, authorize this to be done under regular rulemaking.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Thorwald and a second by Ms. Davis. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Um, that will take us to item five on the agenda, which is review consideration and possible action on the draft protocol included in the standing order issued by the Department of Health Services. Is there any feedback on the protocol?
Only a comment and uh, thank my staff for Doug and Jen for covering me while I work on this project and then Girag and Rom for uh, being my resource. They were tremendous help in putting this protocol together.
Yeah, thank you to the whole staff. I know this was a big lift over the last week and a half. Um, the only thing that I have is a technical correction, Dr. Gandhi. Um, I think we're missing uh, um, section C, which is um, non-substantive, but we go A, B, A, B to D and um, don't have a section C, but that was the only correction that I had in terms of the actual, no, I'm sorry, that was I'm sorry, that's the rule. Never mind. The protocol looks good.
Yep, we'll make those minor corrections and.
Any feedback on the protocol?
It looks straightforward.
Looks, that looks so very clear and straightforward.
And this draft is also posted for the public on the board's website, correct, Dr. Gandhi?
That is correct.
Any other feedback? Um, Stephanie, Jeff?
No additional feedback.
Yep, no additional feedback. Looks good.
Frank or Les, anything to add from your per- perspective?
Not for me. This looks good. Thank you.
I think it looks good as well.
Um, Ms. Calvin, do we need a motion with regards to the protocol? It seems like we're at consistent consensus.
Yes, so the motion would be to approve the protocol as presented and submit it to DHS with the recommendation to include it in the standing order.
I'll make that my motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Brasswell and a second by Mr. Thorwald. Any discussion, board members? All those in favor? I. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Um, Dr. Gandhi, before we go back to call to the public, um, can either you or Ms. Calvin give us an idea of what to expect from here? I'm sure that the public probably has a lot of questions and to minimize those for your team, perhaps you could go through what we should expect in terms of timeline and what the process looks like, since emergency rules are somewhat a little bit different, um, and something we're probably not all familiar with, including myself.
I can certainly go through it. Obviously, the board approved two pathways, right? The first is the emergency rulemaking, which is more swifter and um, and faster. Uh, but before I get into that, I mean, I can maybe have Lynn or Jordan put up the one eight hundred number, because again, there's a delay.
Yep, that's great.
Um, so the emergency rulemaking process, uh, once we finish the um, minor corrections that we're, we're wanting to make, uh, we'll have to uh, form, make it into a form that's digestible by the Attorney General's Office. So we should get that to them probably early next week, Monday, Tuesday. You will get the uh, person from the Attorney General's Office about two or three days to review those, those rules and make sure everything is in compliance with what they're looking for. Then it boils up to their leadership and then they have to sign off on it. So from the time I submit it to, to the time it's authorized by the Attorney General, uh, should be about a, a week, bust her mind, it's a couple of days. Um, and then obviously, we're gonna get, get kickstarted on the normal rulemaking process, um, which majority of it is done already, but uh, we will um, solicit more public comment at that time, because there's more time for, for that and feedback. And that's gonna take uh, the normal rulemaking process. If everything goes smoothly, can take six months at a minimum. Uh, and it can go to a year, year and a half, depending on how many folks want to speak to. Does that kind of address that?
But to be clear, I guess for the public, the anticipation that is that um, likely this will be available for use by the public at some point next week. Is that?
I would say, I would say within two weeks.
Within two weeks, okay.
Ms. Calvin, correct me if I'm wrong, two weeks for private.
Um, correct. Um, so under the statute, the AG has um, sixty days to review and approve an emergency rule. Obviously, given the, you know, statewide importance of this issue, um, I don't anticipate that um, that is going to take us long. Um, the rules attorney for the AG's office um, happens to be me. So um, I have a jump on the documents that, that we need to prepare. The Attorney General throughout all of this um, has expressed her strong support for the Governor DHS, um, the boards, everything that they're doing. So I would imagine um, that the turnaround is, is going to be quickly. Um, and I, I would think it would be, you know, it, it sometime, hopefully next week or, you know, very early, the, the week following. The rules aren't effective until they are filed with the Secretary of State. And I have alerted the Secretary of State already that, um, to expect this package, um, hopefully next week. But I'm, I'm gathering the documents that the AG office needs um, this weekend.
Thank you both, thank you both for that clarification. Board members, any questions? I just wanted to make sure that the public knew what to expect, because I'm sure there will be lots of questions. All right, um, let's go to public comments. Um, again, um, we will open it up the lines for public comment. We will be limiting the time to three minutes, not knowing how many individuals may choose to call in. Um, uh, the moderator of the meeting, Lynn, will be keeping track of time. There will be three beeps at thirty seconds and then at three minutes, the, the person will be muted. Um, if people are late joining, we've already taken action on these items, but we do feel that public comment is important to hear. Um, so certainly want to make sure that we hear the public out, especially since this, um, we did authorize the director to move towards uh, uh, formal rulemaking, um, as this process moves forward. So, um, Lynn, is there anybody online?
It appears we have a gentleman in the uh, Zoom meeting, Mr. Polowski.
Mr. Polowski, if you could unmute yourself, please.
Hi, Paul. Uh, thank you for offering the opportunity to speak. Uh, my name's Matt. I'm a registered pharmacist here in Arizona. Um, I was just seeking some clarification uh, regarding the proposed protocol. Um, I have it pulled up here. Uh, I was looking at specifically uh, table one C on page fourteen, um, where it lists the uh, the recommendations for the, the new twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six uh, COVID vaccines. Um, I noticed a, a potentially a discrepancy in there. I noticed a, potentially a discrepancy in there. It listed all four of the, the updated COVID vaccines and giving the recommendation that they may be given at least two months after the, the previous COVID nineteen immunization dose. Looking at specifically for this, the new Spike Vax vaccine by Moderna. In the FDA-approved package insert, it gives the recommendation for at least three months after the the patient's last COVID nineteen vaccine. So just wanted to call that out and seek some clarification on that.
Thank you, Mr. Palowski, staff, can we review that? Offline?
Absolutely, we'll take account of it.
But thank you for your feedback, is there anything else you wanted to share with us?
Um, yeah, actually, yes, just really quick. So I, I work for an ICNP health plan in the mobile care setting. And we've definitely seen an increased number of cases with patients coming to our providers understandably frustrated when they're, they're getting turned away from community pharmacies. I, I, I was just seeking clarification after you all move and make the final vote, would this remove the requirement that for eligible patients would require a prescription from their provider before, you know, receiving their vaccine at the pharmacy at point of sale?
Dr. Gandhi, do you want to address that question?
Absolutely, and thank you for that question. Yes, this does eliminate the need for, it, it, it takes time back, basically, a year ago where pharmacists were able to administer vaccinations on a protocol, and that's where, that's where we're kind of going to right now. So they won't, the patients won't need a prescription.
And can, that's upon not only the approval of the rules and the filing, but the issuance of a standing order, correct?
That is correct, so the standing order, if you look at the rules, kind of is defined as a standing order will be considered a prescription order. In a sense, so as long as DHS has a standing order placed, pharmacists will be able to give an immunization to patients that just walk in.
I'm sorry, just need to clarify, so the standing order, that pharmacists will use the chief medical officer for Department of Health as a prescriber. So the prescription is still required, but will be under the standing order.
Yeah, so patient, patient doesn't have to walk in with a prescription.
Correct, so.
Standing order, exactly.
So prescription is still required, will be easy access for patients to use the standing order. And the pharmacists will put the medical officer or whoever will sign the standing order.
That's correct.
As the prescriber, yeah.
And Matt, I think you're familiar with how standing orders work.
Correct, yes.
So it would be pursuant.
And that would be basically like as we used in our can previously.
That's correct, exactly.
Good analogy. Thank you, thank you for dialing in, and thank you for your feedback today, I appreciate it. Lynn, is there anybody else that we have?
There is not.
Madam Chairman, if I may, based upon the, I'm sorry, Matt's comments, I don't recall the last name. Will the board direct Dr. Gandhi to research the issue about the Spike Vax in Moderna? And the time within which, you know, the gap between initial and booster shot? Will you delegate to the executive director to research that? And if necessary, modify the chart with consultation with his compliance officers and the chair and our vice chair?
Add a motion by Mr. Russell and a second by Ms. Davis, any discussion? All those in favor? Any, any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Ms. Galvin, anything else on that?
No, thank you.
Ms. Kianavong, is there anybody present in the room?
No ma'am, there is not.
One more call, Lynn, is there anybody else online that would like to make a comment?
There is nobody online.
Okay, Dr. Gandhi, but correct me, I think that takes us to the end of the agenda, do we handle everything that we needed to for today?
We did, Madam Chair, and thank you again for coming together on short notice.
Yes, appreciate everybody's flexibility and attendance for this important issue. We will adjourn for the day, thank you so much.